Hey guys, I was rewatching the footage and I just looked into the engine. And there it is. Lucky us. That could have been very, very bad. So. Now that we've got that, we are going to start putting everything together. So let's start by going in our tool bench or our little rollie sculpt thing here and we have a bag that is labeled with, and it should have our whatever those things are called for the pistons, if I can find it. It might be in the lower end, which is fine. Not in this. Here they are. Boom. Yeah, great. Okay. So. I'll let you guys watch. Just like that. So. This is I think it goes here's the holes for the dowels, so if we flip that this end would be the front and we know that cuz these guys are here. So we want piston arrows facing that way. Let me grab post it just so we can remember. There we go. Now I know it's the front. That's just a reminder to make sure I don't forget anything. Oh, I guess we have one more of those rings to get out. We'll be more careful this time on where it goes. This guy. Getting there, almost got it. This guy's a little tough to get out, just like the other one. But once we get it, we'll get it. That's fine. This guy's pretty tough to get off. Let me put this guy in here, then I can get another screwdriver and just keep on working it around. Just a matter of taking our time, like I said before, we don't wanna damage anything. Man, this guy just doesn't wanna come out of there. Real pain. Let me work it on this way. Man, oh man, this is tough. Just can't man, can't get this thing out. You know, I don't really care about this ring, so we can be a little rough with it. Cuz we have a bunch of really good ones over there in that bag that I showed you. I just don't wanna get hit by a flying ring cuz these things go real fast. Sorry guys, it's taking a really long time, but this thing just isn't coming out of there. Let me see, I'm gonna snap this thing back in and then see if we can just give it a whole new shot. There we go, it's back in. Let's try the other end, see if it's easy to get that fell out. This guy is really tough. Yikes, let's see here. Do we have an even smaller screwdriver? I think we do. Yep. Oh, now it comes out, of course. After we take like five minutes working it. Okay, I'm gonna put my finger over it this time so that it can't fly anywhere. And then we're just gonna keep on working around this ring. I forgot the name of them, but there we go, we just got it off. Put it with the other one, cuz I do not plan on using those ones. And then we'll take a light screwdriver and just push out the pin. If we can get it out. Sometimes they need a little help. Maybe it likes this way better. We'll push this way. Yeah, this guy just doesn't wanna come off of there. That's okay. I'm gonna take it, I'm gonna take a rubber mallet, give it a few light taps to see if we can get this pin out. Isn't moving at all. Not quite sure what else to do here. Not sure what we can do. I think it just moved a little bit, if I'm not mistaken. But it shouldn't be this hard to get this out. It's not even budging. Tell you what. We're gonna heat it up and see if we can get it to move after we influence it with a little bit of fire. Okay, got the torch up. Let's see if we can give it some very light influence. I'm not gonna heat it up a whole lot cuz we don't wanna damage anything. But this guy just doesn't seem to be working at all. I'm not quite sure why. Maybe it's the how cold it is, but not sure. Well, I guess the torch isn't working too well either. That's okay. I guess we can let me just hold the torch for a little bit, see if it'll warm it up enough. While we're doing that, let's see if we can get the heater to work, 'cause it's getting cold in here. Oh, there we go. Let's go. It's good and warm now. We'll set that right there. So it warms up a little bit. There we go. Okay, let's see if we can get it going now. There we go. Now, very, very considerate amounts of heat on there. Just warming it up. Enough to get this thing out. Let's see how that goes. It is warmed to the touch now, so let's see how that comes out. I guess it's, it's really in there. We'll try another one of the pistons, see if the other one comes out easier. But that means that we have to get more of these rings out, which is kind of a pain, but it'll be worth it. You can't expect much when you get eBay parts, I guess. I mean, I thought I chose a reputable company. They had lots of good reviews, sold lots of products, everybody seemed pretty happy, but I guess you get what you get. Okay. Almost got this fell out. Almost there, we're getting closer. Okay, there, we've got both, both of the tabs out now. Let's see if we can get this sucker out of here. It's, it was easier last time, I'm not sure what technique I used, I think I read something in the owner's manual. There we go, there's one of them. Let's get that second one out of there. Get this pin out. Oh, this one just popped right out, right again. It's pretty cool. Hopefully these guys move a little bit easier. We'll try the same sequence again, a little bit of encouragement with the mallet. We didn't tap them, and then a little bit of heat. What I wanna do here is heat the rod, not the piston, and not the pin. Cuz if the rod gets heated, it'll expand. Actually, no, we wanna heat the piston. Cuz that bit is assuming that my thoughts are correct, that bit is clamping down, not letting the pin out. We'll just warm it up a little bit, give it a little bit of heat. I should probably show you guys this bit. Let me see if there's a better angle. Yep. There's that piston that we're working on. Just apply a little bit of heat. Let's try that. I don't wanna touch this cuz it's really hot now. It's a lot warmer. Oh, yep, we're getting movement, let's go. That's what I'm talking about. Just need a little bit of heat. Oh yeah, you see that? You can see this bit sticking out now. There we go. Yep, there we go. There's the rod, and I'll give that guy a minute to cool down, cuz that piston is probably s- pretty hot. Yep. Now, I don't really like the way that one's fitting. It seems to be pretty tight, so I think I'm gonna try putting this one instead. Hot piston. I'm just gonna let that cool down, that's really hot. But for now, we can start installing the other pistons, which I put over here. I'll put you guys right back. See you guys. Done? Our piston here has the arrow facing the front, so we're gonna take it. We are going to put it in there, compress those rings. Just so it slides in. And then oh, we're caught on one of the rings there. And there we go. Oh, I should probably put a little bit of oil in there. I have this, this cool little thing right here that I found at Nards. That we can use, but I want this guy high enough up to where I can easily access it. Cuz we need to put the pin through. I should have oiled the cylinder before, that's a realization. We'll take it out and try it again, but we'll actually oil the cylinder this time. Put some in there, and then just rub it around, make sure that the surface is lubricated. Oh, sorry about that. There we go, now I got the arrow pointing towards the front. And we'll squeeze those rings. I don't have a ring compressing tool. Which is, it's okay, I mean, I think I can live without it, but it's okay. There we go. Almost in there, so close. There we go, almost. There we go, much happier now that it has some oil in there. We'll add a little more. There we go. And we'll lift it up so that we have access to that pin there. There we go, perfect. Now we'll do the same thing with the other four pistons. So, here we go again. Find the arrow. And, oh, oil the cylinder first. Then we'll line up the rings, just so it's a little easier to squeeze them. Squeeze them together. And just shimmy them on in. It needs to go in a little farther, there we go. This guy's kind of a pain in the ass here. I have oh, there it goes. I guess it's good. Okay, same deal, look for the arrow. Oil the cylinder up. Just make sure it's good. Just enough to make sure it slides in alright. Now, get that arrow, flip it over. Line it up. Oh, almost there. Oh, we're getting real close. There we go, almost, come on now. There we go. Oh, just a little bit on this end. You'd think these would go in a little easier, I should have just, I should have a piston ring compressing tool, but not everybody has the fancy, the fancy tools. not everybody has the fancy, the fancy tools. Now, this guy's acting a little weird. I don't think I should be having to force it in like that. We'll flip it this way, see what happens if we put it like this. Now, that oil ring, just give it some light taps. Flip that guy like that. And take the rubber mount, just give it a couple really light taps. Just cuz we don't wanna damage anything in here. Alright, I don't like how easily the other ones went in, and how much of a pain in the ass this one's been. It makes me second guess buying the used eBay ones, but there wasn't any other option. Flip the thing around, just knock it out of there. This is pretty odd. That oil ring just doesn't wanna go in. I should probably just compress it a little more. Okay, let's try again. Let's add a little bit around here. Oh, well. Now that the oil's on there, it's making it a lot easier. It's just the bottom. Oh, yep, there we go. Almost in there. Come on. Yep, yep. There we go. That's perfect. And, put one more. And, oh, we almost forgot to turn the gas torch off. That could've been bad. Here's our last one. Arrow and the front. We'll put some oil in here. Put some oil on the rings. Show the arrows facing the front. Squeeze the rings together. And just push this fella in there. There we go. Now, it is good and in there. Awesome. Okay, now, here comes the kind of challenging bit here. We have to put the pistons on the connecting rods when they're in the cylinder. Maybe it would've just been easier to put these on here, and then just squeeze the rings again and put them in here. I'm not sure. I think we'll try this. So, bah. We don't want to accidentally knock a ring and then have it fall in here, so I'm gonna take some trusty paper towels and make a big line, big enough for the whole engine. Then, wherever we have a connecting rod, I'm going to poke a little hole and pull the connecting rod through. This way, if one of our rings here flies off, it won't go into the engine. It'll be completely blocked off. There we go. Let's see how this goes. Oh, we should take these guys out before we start. It's probably cuz of how cold it is. The pistons just don't want to work. Come on now, just let it go. There we go. Come on, come on. Oh my, I think we're just gonna put the pistons on here first, and then put the cylinder head on. This is really tough. Go. Okay, now, put this guy in here. Just work this guy through, being real gentle. It would probably be easier if we warmed this guy up again. There we go. Yep, boom. That's one piston in. Now we'll put these rings on. So we'll grab two rings. Oh, not drop the rings. Just try not to do that. And then, just wanna work them in there, making sure that they are fully seated. And take this guy, just squeeze it in. Oh, that's one of them in. Cool. Now I got one more on the other side.